Okay, we can begin, Mayor.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna do a roll call to start us off. I want to welcome everybody out there that's watching on our different social media platforms, be it YouTube or the town website, or the link provided by the town, one of the three. I will note that Commissioner Michael is en route from the Green right now to get in front of the computer while her her girls just finished their dance recital on the Green, so she will be here shortly. We do have a quorum, and Commissioner Michael is here now. That was quick. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna do a roll call and then we'll get started. Mayor Pro Tim Campbell?
Here.
Commissioner Fuller? Commissioner Fuller?
President.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Fort?
Here.
Commissioner Michael?
Here.
And Commissioner Sitten?
Here.
Okay, we're here. First up, I'm gonna give Autumn time to bring in our newly sworn in Fire Chief onboard with us, so he can say a couple of words. And I just want to tell everybody, last Thursday, we had a wonderful event at Fire Station Number One, where I gave Ryan Montez, the oath of office as our duly newly sworn in Fire Chief. He had family and friends there. We had a lot of our staff there. It was a good time, and the weather was good, and there was a lot of support for Ryan. So I said it then, I'll say it now, we are in good hands, and I am glad that you heeded the call when we asked you to take the role as Fire Chief, Ryan. So thank you very much.
Mayor, thank you very much. Thank you to you and the the other elected officials for your continued support. It's very humbling. It's a responsibility that I do not take lightly. But I will tell you, and I told Commissioner Michael this the day of after you had left, that it's a calling to be in this town and to work not only with the officials, but work with our everyday staff across all departments. So I'm truly blessed. I really am. You know, I've been fortunate to be able to serve two towns for, you know, one for 14 years and one for 20-plus years. And, you know, there's a lot of differences, but at the end of the day, it's all about serving the citizens. Our staff does a wonderful job of doing that, and I look to carry on that tradition of providing that excellent service to the town moving forward. So thank you.
Well, we appreciate your your time and effort that you devote to Davidson. I loved Ryan. Ryan's oldest son pointed out to me, he said, "I am the eldest, and I am the one that singled out all the time." So he was a great guy, and then we were signing the paperwork on top of the the chief's Tahoe at the end, and he wanted to know if we were signing the contract. He needed to see if we were treating his dad fairly. So he wanted to review the contract.
I've not given him the town manager's number on that yet, so we'll hold off on that.
Thank you.
But thank you. I appreciate it.
I hear a bunch of silent claps, and you know you've got our support, Ryan. So thank you again. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it.
Okay. We move on. I have a proclamation to read. National Public Works Week is May 16th through the 22nd, 2021. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the town Davidson. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government, and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the town of Davidson to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in the respective communities. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the community's understanding of the work they perform. And whereas 2021 marks the 61st Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now therefore be it resolved, I Rusty Knox, Mayor of the Town of Davidson, North Carolina, do hereby designate the week of May 16th through the 22nd, 2021, as National Public Works Week, and further extend appreciation to our public works department for the vital service they perform and their exemplary dedication to our community. Proclaim this 11th day of May, 2021. So Jesse and his crew out there, any of you that may be listening, or may want to tune in at a later date, one of the two, we can't thank you enough for everything you do, and if we tried to, it still wouldn't be enough thanks, honestly. So that goes without saying. All right, with that?
The big chair is in order.
Agreed. Agreed. Mr. Justice, any changes to the agenda?
No changes, Mayor.
All right, item number four on the agenda is the Town of David COVID response. Jamie, I'm gonna turn that over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be very brief and happy to answer any questions. Vaccine is the name of the game right now. Just trying to get that out. For county population, 33% is fully vaccinated and 41.2 partially vaccinated. So those numbers are going up. We're continuing to promote the vaccination sites that are available out there for folks. So that was something the board was interested in. And then Pfizer has been approved by FDA for that vaccine dose to be able to be administered to youth 12 to 15 years old. So that's the latest development here that's happened on that front. Otherwise, we continue to keep working in that direction with the vaccine. And I'm happy to answer any questions or anything that the board may have. That's all we've got to report.
Well, I just, I would urge everyone that's listening, if you've not gotten your vaccine, please do it. It's important. I I looked at the numbers when the county turned out the zip code numbers and the percentages, and Myers Park was at about 71%, and we were at 58% and change. And although that's commendable, I honestly thought Davidson would be much higher than 58%. So I don't know where that that gray area is between where we should be, in my opinion, and where we are. But again, I would urge everybody that, you know, as these clinics are starting to close down now, and Bojangles is closing down and several others, so the vaccine is readily available. It's not like you can't find it. It's not like gasoline. You can actually find a vaccine. So I would urge you to go out and get it for not only your health and safety, but the health and safety of others. We went to Charlotte today. My wife got her second, so she's done. So it's important to get vaccinated. So please do.
Hey, Jamie, Karen, would you happen to know, are the college students included in those percentage calculations?
I can verify they should be because it's broken down by county and zip codes, and that that's assigned to the college. But let me verify and just make sure.
Normally, they're included in our population statistics. And I would imagine since those records are coming from the Health Department for the vaccine clinics, I would think that they would be counting them. But it's, you know, again, Jamie, if you could.
Yeah, just wondering if, you know, they were, I know they did two, two different clinics, and you know, there was fortunate and unfortunate. They had a bunch of extra openings because not everybody showed up that was scheduled to show up. And I'm wondering if maybe that's pushing us down a bit, but interested to find out.
All right, I'll find out.
Okay. All right, we move on. If there's no other discussion on COVID, to item number five, which is a public hearing. This public hearing is about proposed changes to the Davidson Planning Ordinance, and I will need a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to open the public hearing for the proposed changes to the DPO as required by state statute.
Thank you, Commissioner Michael. I will do a roll call. Mayor Pro Tim Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Fuller?
Yes.
Commissioner Fort?
Yes.
Commissioner Sitten?
Yes.
And Commissioner Michael?
Yes.
Okay, public hearing is open at this time. I now will defer to Planning Director Jason Burdette. Do I go to Jason first, or do I ask for public the comments that we've received for the public hearing first? Betsy?
Yeah, I'll go first, and we have not received any comments related to this public hearing for tonight, so I don't have any public comments to share.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, we'll turn it over to our Planning Director Jason Burdette for a summary of what this is about. Welcome, Jason.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Let me share my screen here with you. Sorry about that. I just lost my screen. We try that more time. I swear, I know how to do this. It just disappeared.
I saw it.
Give me a sec. Let me open it back up.
Every meeting that's a good meeting has a technology issue.
Yes.
You're absolutely right. I had this all ready to go, and it just disappeared on me. Okay, can everybody see that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, as the mayor described, we are here for a a public hearing for proposed changes to the Davidson Planning Ordinance, specifically Chapter 160D text amendments. I gave you an update last month, so I believe you're all familiar with it. All the information is here on the Agenda Memo. And there are 33 pages of proposed text amendments, but also I'll try to be brief here. Unlike last two weeks ago's presentation. But by and large, the North Carolina General Assembly adopted a complete reorganization of the state's planning and development regulations, creating a new chapter, 160D. It consolidates two previous municipal chapters specific to cities and counties and put it together in a unified chapter. It's reorganized some of the structure of the chapter organization. There are no major policy changes or shifts in authority. It's already in effect, actually, but municipalities have until July 1st to make the necessary changes to their ordinances. You've already made one change in December, specific to variances. And during this exercise, this text amendment update, staff did come across three miscellaneous text amendments that we felt could be included in this. And those are called out specifically in the draft text amendments here under miscellaneous. And I'll share some more information about that in just a second. So briefly, really quickly, you've seen this before, the summary of the 160D text amendments is specific to updating some terminology and citations, providing additional information about geographic jurisdictions and split jurisdictions, some additional guidance on governing boards, land use administration, some of the substance of zoning ordinances, legislative decisions, quasi judicial decisions, administrative approvals and determinations, vested rights, and judicial review. I will add, this is the three miscellaneous text amendments we have here, unaffiliated specifically with 160D, but we felt they were, they were in the spirit of cleaning up and clarifying. One is to remove an outdated reference to minor subdivision, which has not been part of our ordinance for a number of years. Two is to extend the certificate of appropriateness sunset. That's what the Historic Preservation Commission issues for for changes to buildings in the local historic district. And changing that from the very limiting 180 days to 18 months, which aligns with the other quasi judicial board we have, the Designer Review Board, and their sunset period. And lastly, with the Designer Review Board, is to remove the requirement for residential accessory structures. Right now, if a residential accessory structure is over a certain size, the DRB does review that, and they specifically asked and questioned that because the General Assembly removed, they prohibit regulations of structures reviewed under Building Code for one and two family dwelling units several years ago with Senate Bill 2. So there really is, there's no purview for this. So the DRB asked for that be removed. I'll also add, I did hear some comments from one citizen this week, specific to quasi judicial noticing. That is something that is included here as with a reference to 160D. But I agree with the citizen that it could be more explicit and clearly called out here. So we're gonna add that. That's not in this update right here, but we'll add that this week. So when it comes to the Planning Board for a recommendation, they'll see that. And when it comes back to you in June, you'll see that as well. So the process is, staff and the town attorney at the time took a class from the School of Government. We've been following School of Government guidance and recommendations using their resources and their blog post. We have reviewed the text amendments with the town attorney. She's provided some guidance. And also, the School of Government offers what they call a code scan service. So we've already begun that. We have another meeting this week, and this is just for a School of Government official, someone who works with the School of Government, to review these proposed text amendments and make sure that we are covering everything that's required by 160D. I see as another check and balance in the process. So I'm thankful that the School of Government does offer that service. So as far as process and next steps, all ordinance requirements or all updates to the ordinance follow Section 14.19.3, specific to amending the Davidson Planning Ordinance. That includes holding a public hearing and noticing a public hearing. That's what we're doing tonight. It includes a required Planning Board recommendation, which is tentatively scheduled for their May 24th meeting, pushed up a week from their normal last Monday in May because of Memorial Day holiday. And then a Board of Commissioners decision, which is tentatively scheduled for one of the two meetings in June, at your discretion. So with that, I understand there's no questions from, or no comments from citizens. If the board has any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
No comments from the, from the public, other than the one seems pretty straightforward.
It is. And again, we've, we've been following School of Government direction, as have many municipalities across the state with this update.
Maybe I jinxed the famous last words on pretty straightforward.
Well, if there's no?
No questions. Just thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Fuller. Of note, I do want to salute my team, who's been working hard on this. A lot of communities have outsourced this to consultants or the Cog, and those prices for those were in excess of $30,000 and $40,000. So so we saved some money. That's great. But we did do a lot of work in-house, and it wasn't easy, but School of Government really helped us out too, so.
I was just gonna say, their Q and A document was, was very thorough. So I think between the work that you and the team did to be able to balance that back, and I like the idea of the code scan just as like a a redundant quadruple check to just make sure. So I think in the timeline that what you've provided is very thorough and detailed. So thank you.
Great, thank you.
All right, if there's no further discussion, I will need a motion to close this public hearing now.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Mayor Pro Tim Campbell has made a motion to close the public hearing. I'll do a roll call at this time. Commissioner Sitten?
Yes.
Commissioner Fort?
Yes.
Commissioner Michael?
Yes.
Commissioner Fuller?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tim Campbell?
Yes.
Public hearing is closed. We move on to item number six. Under this section, there are one, two, three, four, five items. These are all for discussion at this time. The first item up is consider approval of Resolution 2021-08, dignity and equality of the Town of Davidson, in the Town of Davidson. I'll turn this over to Town Manager Jamie Justice.
Thanks, Mayor. This resolution came about at the last town board meeting, where the board asked to approve a resolution that really discusses and clearly states the support for every member of the Davidson community. And so this, this resolution was drafted and is attached to your agenda. And unless anybody has any further comment, then it's, it's on the agenda here for approval.
And I want to remind everybody, this is, this is.
Move approval.
Thank you, Jim. A motion has been made to approve the resolution as presented to us, and I'm gonna do a roll call at this time if there's no more discussion. Commissioner Sitten?
Yes.
Commissioner Fort?
Yes.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Fuller?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, we move on to item B. Betsy is gonna bring in our Housing and Equity Director Eugene Bradley, who's gonna talk to us about updates on our nondiscrimination ordinance at this time. Welcome, Eugene.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Everyone's doing okay?
We're great. How are you?
Good, good, good. Well, wanted to give just a quick update on our nondiscriminating ordinance. We've been kind of steadily chomping at the bit of kind of getting an ordinance, working with our Housing Equity Board, and also getting public input. And so we've been working through that. We still have some steps to go. So I'll share a brief kind of presentation of kind of where we are, I mean, where we want to go, and how we want to proceed moving forward. Okay. So our nondiscriminated ordinance, we've been kind of adding, you've seen this probably several times, it was in past documents, really kind of stating kind of the protected classes that we want to make sure we're ensuring that folks are, are protected. We've added several titles on of that. Part of, one of the things that we really wanted to focus on is really the, because it's a ordinance, the question of how we enforce. And we really wanted to be thoughtful in how we did that piece as the Town of Davidson, really kind of really addressed the character of this town specifically. And one of the recommendations that our our Housing Equity Board did suggest was really starting a committee specifically to address any of the complaints. One of those, one of the recommendations was to have five to seven members, determined by this Board of Commissioners, in order to have a full representation of the community to review those complaints. And so as the process, if we have a complaint that's submitted, and the committee will, will essentially form, doing a formal investigation, they kind of will mediate kind of the process. One of the items that we do want to point out is, if there's no resolution from that, a $500 fine would be in play as long as the discrimination continued. This is in line with several other municipalities that we've kind of studied and took a look at as far as how the enforced a piece will work. But the key thing here is really pointing towards our committee in really selecting individuals that will represent the community in a lot of different areas. So we have a good set of folks to look at this. In addition to that, and one of the things that we've heard so far in some of the feedback is the training aspect for the committee. And so we're looking at a couple of opportunities for that, of how we train our committee members to, in the realm of mediation, and a couple of other items. We want to make sure these folks are educated in how to make a decision. And so that's something that we'll be working on in the coming months, if we continue in this direction. But those are some of the, the main highlights of the nondiscriminating ordinance. I'll kind of give you just a couple of dates of that, kind of where we have been and where we're going. On April 15th, our Housing Equity Board drafted its first recommendation to this board. Public survey had went out on April 19th to the 27th. It was cold at that point. We have about 1,200 or so responses to that. Coming up this week, we'll be meeting with town business owners at our leadership with Kim Fleming. And so we'll look forward to hearing from them and getting their feedback and input. We do feel like their voices will be a strong one in the sense of this who it really will affect at the end of the day. So we're excited about engaging them and really understanding kind of their concerns as well. And then on next Monday, we'll have our public input presentation. So we'll have a formal presentation and then allow public to comment on those specific questions or things that they may have. And then we will offer opportunity for feedback via a web, well, email address, that people can submit their concerns or questions there, and we'll be able to keep that on record as well. And after that, we'll have our Housing Equity Board meeting on the 20th. At that point, we'll make final recommendations. And then, once that is approved, that will actually come to your board for our next board meeting. And at that point, you can have full discussion of that recommendation, things that you may want to adjust, and then we can move forward from there. And so those are kind of the schedules that we're on. We're steadily kind of engaging folks on a lot of different levels. And so I'm excited and pleased about kind of what we've done and then where we're going. But with that, I'll ask if there are any questions or any discussion points?
Yeah, Eugene, I think the one question I have. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Sorry, Jim, you're on some sort of delay. It's literally like a 15-second delay, just so you know.
I'm sorry.
Two things. I really like us to think about having an appeal to the Board of Commissioners. I, I'm a little concerned about a non-elected group of individuals levying fines on residents or business owners without formal board input on that. So I'd like to delay the $500 a day until there's a, an appeal process with the board. And then the other thing is, I thought I had mentioned at least a couple of public input sessions, and it looks like we only have one. So maybe it's a, it's an iteration where you add on after you have your public input session, and then if there's any modifications that the Housing Board needs to do, and then another public input session, and then to finalize it. We've done that with, you know, a couple of other ordinance changes, especially on targeted conditional, and that seemed to work well. So I would recommend that we interject another public input session as well.
One of the, and staff could also speak to this. We wanted to make sure that we, we kind of hit some timelines and didn't want to delay anything on, on our behalf, on our side. And so I'm, I'm quite open to adding additional public opportunities to weigh in. But we didn't want to delay anything on our end at your direction. So that's something that we, I think we can do.
Yeah, that, just to weigh in, that is something we were trying to keep it on that same path forward in May. So if you all want us to push that recommendation out at the advisory board level, we just need that direction.
Jim, go ahead and comment.
Yeah, my, my question, I mean, I'm I've really got several. Do, do we have an opinion from our attorney? Do we have an opinion from our attorney that we have the authority to impose fines, issue subpoenas, and and come to conclusions?
Good evening. Commissioner Fuller and I had a very good conversation yesterday about this issue, and the enforcement piece is certainly the most difficult part of this ordinance. And this is what a lot of towns and counties are struggling with right now, is they're putting together something, and even if they have put together something and passed it, it may not be in effect yet. So we really haven't seen any of these ordinances tested. And that is that is one of the concerns. I don't believe that we have the ability to subpoena witnesses. I don't believe that we have, I think our abilities would become to more of a civil forfeiture and similar to a traffic ticket. But we'd have to have the law enforcement involved in issuing any type of ticket. So if the law enforcement isn't able to do that, then we would need to be doing it through. If there's no resolution in this committee, then it would have to be their recommendation to issue an ordinance. And at that point, it'd be like any other ordinance. There would be an appeal process. And then we could consider whether or not that would be through the through the board or through the regular mechanisms for ordinance violations. What's difficult about this ordinance is just the defining what discrimination is and making sure that it's not a vague ordinance and making sure that there are groups that we have that we don't leave out individuals or groups. Whenever you name groups, you you know, you could possibly be leaving one out. And I think the the other piece that from a legal perspective is if we have something on the books and we don't enforce it, then we become open to liability for not enforcing an ordinance. And and that is a concern, or we could get drawn into some of these lawsuits if we either pursue them or if we don't pursue them. But we could be witnesses, we could be subject to other lawsuits as they go forward throughout the state when it comes to a violation. So there's a lot of legal ramifications to passing ordinance like this that we've kind of talked about, but they're all things that you all need to know. One of the concerns that I spoke to with Mr. Fuller yesterday is that if the if a violation is issued against, say, a local business and and during that process, it harms their reputation and that the case is determined to be a void case, then, you know, have we damaged the reputation of a local business? And so we just have to be sensitive to all of these issues if we're looking at moving ahead with an ordinance. That was a long answer, Commissioner Fuller. I'm sorry.
No, I appreciate it, Mary Ann. So thank you, and thank you, Jim, for the question.
It was a thought. It was a thoughtful answer. And and I I think we need to invest a little thought. I mean, for example, when our police issue a traffic citation under North Carolina law, that is a criminal offense, and there are specific statutes that authorize it. So in since we are what is called a Dillon State, meaning all legislative authority rests with the General Assembly. It seems to me that we would need a grant of legislative authority from the General Assembly to to do what we're talking about doing here. And I mean, I hasten to add, I'm a hundred percent in favor of an anti-discrimination resolution. I'm a hundred percent opposed to any discrimination. And I dare say I've spent the last thirty years proving, I believe, that in courts all over the state of North Carolina. But wanting to do it is not the same as having demonstrated authority to act.
And Commissioner Fuller, I'm humbled to speak after you on the issue of discrimination and civil rights. I think one philosophy and being a Dillon State is that if it's not specifically regulated by the state, then that perhaps gives the locals the ability to step in and and pass an ordinance. If a lot of ordinances are passed, you know, the legislature General Assembly could go back and decide they wanted to take control of it, and then they could, in fact, pass something. So there's always that risk in in a state, a Dillon State.
Yeah, I mean, I, Jim, I appreciate your and Mary Ann's feedback, and Jim, I echo your sentiments on everything as well. I, Mary Ann, after hearing what you're saying, it makes me want to take a little bit longer of a pause on this and make sure that we vet this out legally before we just go jump in to both feet, realize that the pool's empty, right? So we we gotta we gotta do the right thing here. We gotta slow it down and make sure that we're not doing anything that's going to cause the town undue harm if we can't prove things or we can't do the fines. You know, I mean, I think we we got off to a great start fifteen minutes ago with a you know, nice gesture of kind of how we as the board in the town of Davidson feel and what we hope for and are asking nicely out of our business owners. I think we should continue the process forward, Eugene, in terms of public input and all the other stuff. But before we vote on something, I think that there's ten questions, Mary Ann, that you that you raised that we need to have answers on.
Yes, sir. And just to chime in, I agree with with all of the above in noting, Eugene, I think our resolution, to me, allowed us to to do, as Matthew said, to state what our feelings are as a board. But as already noted, to dot every i, to cross every t, to make sure that we understand where we are. I think we'll we'll know potentially by the end of this General Assembly session whether there is going to be any changes. You know, that does not preclude some sort of a special session. But we realize that what the the history is, you know, in the last five years, that kind of resulted us getting to this point. And so it's not to say stop doing work, but keep doing the work and just know that we we need to do it methodically. It's the right thing to do, but whichever lawyer on the screen said, it might have been Mary Ann, that if you have an ordinance, but you don't enforce it, you know, that's problematic, too. So, you know, we need an ordinance, but we don't need something that's not enforceable, that's not applicable, you know, all of those things. So let's do it in the right timeframe. Let's continue moving forward. I, for one, hope that we continue moving forward, but again, do it in the right way. Make sure that it is something that is enforceable and workable within the community. But, you know, to go back to where we were with talking at the last session. To me, this is an issue of 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 not saying we're asking for a public vote on human rights. That's not what we're saying. What what to me, the resolution did was affirm the dignity and equality of every person in our community. Now, move forward, measured in a process to make sure that that if it is an enforceable ordinance to be able to to lay that out, then that's the right thing to do.
I I appreciate the board's thoughtful.
I I agree a hundred percent with what Jamie said. I and and I am completely in favor of mediation, trying to bring people together as citizens and neighbors to resolve a a dispute or concern. My question has to do with getting an adversarial process and in effect labeling someone a bigot. If we're talking about a $500, if you don't mediate, does that mean the complainant faces a $500 fine if she or he doesn't mediate? Or is this a one-way ticket for the business owner? I I'm not trying to to wait this down tonight. I've just got a lot of questions, and I haven't heard them discussed really at all. And and believe that what we need to do, what what we owe to each other in our town is a thoughtful discussion and to raise not as few, but as many questions as we can come up with. I'd rather have the discussion now than when we find we're in about six months or eighteen months from now.
Autumn.
Thank you, and I really appreciate the board's thoughtful comments on this. Eugene, I guess I would add to this to say that I would really be interested in any alternative mechanisms to enforcement that are different from this this process, Citizen Committee. So I don't know what all is out there in terms of what other communities are doing. It sounds like most of them maybe are doing this sort of citizen enforcement. Yeah, I'm still trying to get comfortable with that, but it sounds like other folks are as well. So that would be my directive or my ask is to look at other other creative alternatives in enforcement.
I think it's kind of the process has been a little bit different from each of those. But they all do kind of come down to either a criminal offense or a civil at at some point. And it's they all get there a little bit differently. Some assign it in investigator of a private kind of outside of source to do that. Some haven't been explicit of how they do that. So there's been a kind of a mixed bag. I think here the difference is we said we want to establish committee made up of the community members across the board, and then the end result could be a civil fine where we didn't elect to go to the criminal aspect of it. But there's that's kind of what we've been looking at with the others, so that we do have other examples. I think people are are taking one of the two approaches, quite honestly.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, Eugene, I think, you know, I really liked what you said there, too, about trying to get mediation training for the if there is. I think that that's a very important thing to do and something that would would need to be a requirement of any citizen that would be nominated to that review process. And then Jamie, from a policy conversation, I was just thinking about this. Now that we've kind of approved the resolution, do we have to formally modify our HR, our internal HR policies, or is that already aligned with our formal Karen? I'm getting the head shake. Yes.
Yep, they have been aligned for quite some time.
The clarity on enforcement is probably the monkey wrench in this thing right now, because the last thing in the world I want the town of Davidson to appear as is a precedent in court for John Doe versus the town of Davidson when somebody else files a lawsuit, because there's going to be a lawsuit. You know, once once communities start passing these ordinances, someone's going to challenge it. And and there's, you know, the 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 potential for fines is probably the 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 one question. You know, as a property owner in Davidson, if I own a building and there's a tenant renting that building and they openly practice discrimination, I just don't renew their lease and I get rid of them. It's that simple. But it's not that simple if 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 the guy that owns the building is the discriminator. You know, then you you've got to you've got to figure out what you do there. So but I I think we we keep our eyes wide open for what other communities are doing across the state, because I think this discussion, I mean, we've been talking about this for well over a year now. But I I think that this discussion has ramped up in the last several months with a lot of communities in the state, and I think we're going to see some precedence set in in the very near future. So I think we can learn from the mistakes of others as we go forward and and to the end of what I think Matt and Autumn both said, Eugene, continue pushing forward on this thing, because I think the more the more foundational groundwork we lay, the better we're going to be when it's time to to implement what's going to be effective.
Yeah. But I agree. I I think the resolution really sets the framework of kind of where we're going. I mean, I think makes it a public thing of this is what what we want to. These are beliefs of our community. And so I think that sets a good tone and framework of how we want to move forward in this and have room to pivot once there's kind of more information that we were able to gather.
Right.
And Eugene, one thing that I had said it at one of the previous meetings, but since I can actually see you during this one is, to me, the importance of the college as one of the the key players in this. You know, we look across our community, and you can look at the census data to understand what our diversity is across the the wider Davidson community, and then to understand that that roughly twenty-seven percent of the college community are persons of color, members of other, you know, communities. And as a result, I want to make sure that we work with the college to make sure that whatever mechanisms that we create, that we haven't created a system that an eighteen to twenty-something-year-old is not comfortable using. And so, you know, again, today was commencement. It doesn't mean that everybody has left town. There are still students around. It still means, I think, something with working with, you know, Dean McCray or or others on campus to ensure that some folks who are likely to be potentially the ones who face the discrimination know that they have a mechanism and to understand what they would feel comfortable in terms of that. You know, we've talked everything from mediation to to other practices. And I think having that input as part of the community conversation that you said is is a critical element of that.
I think to Matt's point, if we have more time in this, and it feels like that's where we're where we're going, I think we can have a couple of different touchpoints with the the community, and I think that's all will be good information.
Yep. And Mary Ann, I'd really just like, you know, I'd love for you to make sure you're voicing your legal concerns, and we understand that you're not against the policy and not just trying to play contrarian or devil's advocate, but my personal request is that you you take the role of making sure that all the traps and all the watchouts are clearly articulated and called out. More vocalness on this one, probably the better from a concerned lawyer's point of view, because I think I think it's important. You know, Jim, thank you so much for talking with Mary Ann about it and raising these issues that would have never occurred to me, even though I did stay at a Holiday Inn last night. So thank you.
All right. Eugene, you good?
We're good.
Okay.
We have a plan moving forward. We'll probably look to add some some new public opportunities to to wait, get input, and then we'll be able to move from there. So but it feels like we have a little bit more time to kind of flesh this out. So I feel comfortable where we're going.
Hey, David, did you have something to say? It looked like you were about ready to speak.
You're muted, Dave.
Nope, nothing, nothing to add from this side.
Okay. All right. With that, thank you, Eugene, for all the work you've done and continue to do. We appreciate it. All right, we move on to item number C, and we have a trifecta of of people that are going to be presenting to us with our Town Manager Jamie Justice, our Assistant Town Manager Karen Richard, and our Finance Director Pete Schwart. So Pete's on now. Welcome, sir. And this is fiscal year twenty-two Budget Capital Improvement Plan Presentation. So thank you and take it away.
All right, sounds good, Mayor. So Karen, Pete, and I will all take turns presenting the overview of the budget. And so appreciate their work on everybody's work getting us to this point. So Pete's going to share his screen. We've got some slides to show you. This is our proposed budget and capital improvement plan for fiscal year twenty-two. So we're excited to be able to provide this to you and the whole community for consideration. If you could go on to the next slide, what we're going to touch on is we're going to touch on kind of how we came about the budget, you know, what was our strategy to develop it? Where does this budget align with our strategic plan and what the town board has set for priorities? Overview of the of the general fund, the main operating fund of our budget. Look at our capital improvement plan and important work we're doing there with infrastructure, touch on some of our other budget areas with solid waste, affordable housing, et cetera, and then talk about what next steps look like. So that's our agenda. We'll just plow through. So next slide, please, sir. All right, strategy wise, looking at this budget as we kind of reflected on this past year, thinking about COVID, and obviously, that's what we've been needing to keep our eye on and continue to keep an eye on, the global pandemic. We are hopeful we'll be coming to a conclusion at some point coming forward. And it was an interesting year trying to anticipate and project how things would impact our budget and what we would do differently. Really proud of the work that everybody did with that getting through last year. And what we really learned was that we were able to pivot, make some adjustments. Revenue didn't drop near as badly as we thought thought it would. And so there were some certainly some good things from a budget standpoint in there. We were able to take advantage of CARES Act funding. So I think that was really strong that we were able to to do that. And so from so looking at this budget, we know that the American Rescue Plan, the latest stimulus package became law in March. And we had been waiting on guidance about how those funds could be used. And the town of Davidson was is slated to receive three point eight two million dollars from that law. And the guidance was just released yesterday. It's one hundred and fifty one pages, and I haven't read it all yet. And so we're all going to absorb it. And that should tell us what we can and can't do much more closely compared to what the law said. It was very broad. So with that uncertainty, an unknown there, we said, we're going to create this budget not counting on any of those funds. You know, that's going to be nonrecurring revenue. There's got an expiration date of about two years out. And we really wanted to make sure our recurring operating budget did what it needed to do with the revenues to match. So our strategy was let's let's proceed with the budget like we would normally do, get it approved by the end of June, and then we'll find out what makes sense on the three point eight two million dollars. Bring that back to the board separately. And if the board is comfortable with whatever plan we come up with, then we would. If we need to adjust the budget later on, we can amend it later. But then that was our thinking in terms of how to move forward on the budget in regards to those funds. And then the other thing we looked at really was it's the town board strategic plan and year two of that two year plan, how do we continue to move forward on those priorities? So we really looked at the budget through that lens. And we also, as always, we really try to be mindful of how can we continue to be competitive with recruiting and retaining a talented workforce? What do we need to do there to make sure we're we're able to compete? And we did also say, look, we we do not need to raise the tax rate. Let's keep that where it is. Our financial plan that we've been working for the last several years has been anticipating we're going to issue this general obligation bond debt. And we don't need to raise the tax rate largely because of money we've been setting aside and the continuum sale. So continuing to work that strategy. And then finally, just, you know, that we know that the infrastructure improvements we need to make in the community, whether that's mobility, greenways, parks, facilities, just those kinds of things that we really focused on in the capital improvement plan. So those are those are the things that went into our thinking to develop this budget. I thought that'd be helpful for you and the community to know that. So next slide, please, Pete. Here's the alignment with the strategic plan. This is the town board's priorities for the community, and you all helped create those six goals and really develop those key strategies that you wanted to implement. So that's what we looked at. So kind of walking through these, we're well planned and livable community goal. So we're embarking on that downtown small area planning coming up. And we're also looking at parks, capital improvement projects. And we had several listed here that we're proposing to fund with this budget. With historic preservation, key focus area, we're included funds for historic landmark surveying, work we can do to determine what properties may be eligible for that. And a lot of those we're going to be looking at is in the town's historic West Davidson area. And then also funding our Main Street grants, which is helping to provide provide and protect the historic core of downtown, those those buildings. Under connecting people and places, again, capital investments, pedestrian safety, intersection improvements, side path, street resurfacing, sidewalk repairs, et cetera. So that's really where we've invested some of those funds in this proposed budget. Next slide, sir. All right, under operational excellence, we're enhancing, need to enhance our cybersecurity efforts in the IT area. We're proposing a shift differential for police officers moving forward with additional funding in pursuit of a grant for that full time fire captain position and then funding for data management and incident reporting software. So some of our, like I refer to the blocking and tackling of the things we need to do from an operational standpoint. Under equity inclusion, funding for affordable housing, critical home repairs, down payment assistance, community equity training, continuing that effort that we're working on there, and gender neutralization of our town code. And then finally, the last goal, sustainability and natural assets. Took those sustainability subcommittee recommendations that you all heard recently and adopted that framework and said, let's move forward with some of those initial things. So that's benchmarking, electric vehicle infrastructure, energy audit, water quality improvements at Rosedale Wilson Park, and additional tree camp be funding in the public works operating budget. Next slide, please. All right, Pete, I'm turning this over to you to talk about.
Great, thanks, Jamie. Mayor and Commissioners, this slide is is really intended to to let you know, as per statute, that the manager's recommended budget is a balanced budget of just over thirteen point five million dollars. We do indicate here what our our original continuation budget was along with some of our recommended needs list items, which we'll talk about later on in the presentation. What this pie chart, the best thing that this will, this this chart demonstrates is that over eighty percent of our revenue, you'll recall, is from ad valorem related property taxes and motor vehicle taxes and combined with sales tax revenue. That makes up the most significant portion of the town's revenue going forward. So our revenue projection assumptions are an overall increase of five point six percent. This is over the modified midyear budget. So that's with the adjustments that you made in January to the FY twenty twenty one budget. We wanted to emphasize again, as Jamie mentioned, that there is no change to the ad valorem tax rate. Will remain at twenty nine cents per one hundred dollars of valuation. That ad valorem growth rate is an increase of seven point two percent over the current fiscal year. And we are returning to our projected historical collection rates of well above ninety nine percent on both real property and motor vehicle taxes. Additionally, as you know, we have been keeping you updated on the current sales and use tax collections for FY twenty twenty one. We've been obviously very, very happy with what those look like. We have budgeted an additional increase of three percent over where we project we will be at the end of twenty twenty one for our sales and use taxes. This budget also includes no use of unassigned fund balance. And of also of note, we have, as we discussed in January as well with our adjustment, we have reduced our interest earning projection to about ten thousand dollars. Actually, not about exactly ten thousand dollars. Additionally, in this budget, we have been fairly conservative based not only on our historical tracking of other of our other revenues. We've also looked at what the North Carolina League of Municipalities is projecting for the upcoming fiscal year. So this includes some of those other sources that we talk about frequently, prepared foods, occupancy, utility franchise taxes. We are projecting a relatively small increase in most of these funding sources for the upcoming year. This is a breakdown by department of our operating budget as well. You will note that within the operating budget, we do have over a million dollars to offset future debt service on the voter approved debt. As Jamie mentioned, this is why we are we are going to be able to, we feel, issue that debt without increasing the tax rate. Also, as Jamie mentioned, we're working on restoring many of those prior year budget adjustments that we did make, many of our town events. We are, we are being very cautious with the increase of our staff travel budgets. We are still looking for virtual opportunities for training, et cetera, that might be available to staff as we move forward. The Arts and Science Council contribution has been restored to its previous rate. Public Art Commission, a portion has been restored. And we have also restored the board strategic planning retreat for next year. Jamie?
I a couple of the employee related changes I wanted to just mention, health insurance. This is a good thing. There's no increase in our health insurance rate. So that's fairly, it's fairly unusual. So we're really happy about that. So that that is a good, good news story. The retirement system for local government employees, the employer match goes up one point two percent. We've been absorbing increases about that amount for the last several years per the plan administration. So that's an increase to our our cost there. We're proposing addition of paid parental leave for all employees. This is something that's in the private and public sector is becoming more prevalent. And providing that benefit, this help would help us be more competitive in that realm to be able to to offer that. And it's feel it's important to add to, you know, make sure we're competitive and and recruitment and retention. So that's what we're talking about there.
What can you give me specific? So what specifically paid, what does that mean? Paid parental leave is very broad. Is it paternity leave?
Yeah, Karen, do you want to talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, generally broad starts, Commissioner Ford. It's eight weeks of paid leave for any employee, male or female, with the acquisition of a child. So whether that's through birth, adoption, foster, that that's kind of the very high level. And then there's a lot more detail behind it, but that's that's it in a nutshell. That helps kind of paint the parameters because it can be very different depending on the organization.
Do we currently have no paid leave?
Correct, we currently do not offer paid parental leave.
I mean, just just feedback in from the private sector. You're low on for a woman and you're too high for a guy. So food for thought. Add a month to the for the ladies and take a month off for the guys.
I think what we did some benchmarking and we can share that with y'all related to what the public sector organizations are doing. And then I know a lot of the banks are really at sixteen weeks for all employees. So I think it just depends, but we can we can pull some of that data.
Yeah, banks are different, though. I mean, come on, we can't, we can't compare the banks.
Right, we'll share the benchmark on the public organizations and so that way you all can see that.
Yeah, I just I'd really rather, I mean, I honestly, I mean, I'm not trying, I mean, I really would rather we go to three months for women who have had a child or adopted. And I think we're giving way too much to the dads on this one. I mean, a month is a lot.
You just gender neutralized our ordinances, though. It's going to be tough because I.
I understand, I understand, but there's a physical difference in terms of having a child for a woman than a guy.
The other thing I would enter. I'm sorry, the other thing I'd interject, Commissioner Ford, is, I don't know, gosh, five or six years ago now, when the Charlotte Mecklenburg Opportunity Task Force listed their recommendations, things like adding an equity lens, how do you improve economic mobility in this community? Being that Mecklenburg County is ninety nine out of one hundred, Charlotte's fifty out of fifty. One of those things was after adding paid parental leave for all employees at the same rate and not just women because of the importance of early childhood bonding. So that I mean, that's a that's another data point in the conversation.
Okay, anything else on that? We'll we'll share some more information and certainly think about that further.
Jamie, are we paying everybody at least fifteen dollars an hour?
Yes, Karen, I believe we answered that, and I don't think that's changed any. Check, double check me on that.
It has not, but I don't remember what our minimum pay is right now off the top of my head, but we can get that information to you all.
Yep, thank you. One of the things we're doing with the police department to try to be competitive because I think this is important and we'll talk talk about that. But this is shift differential pay. And what that means is for officers that are going to be working nights. We have folks that rotate so that when they do work nights, they would get an additional dollar fifty per hour for working nights. That is a something, not something that other communities around us are doing. And Chief Dunn has said that really this was a priority for her department. She is trying to continue to fill vacancies and working on that. And to be more competitive and having offering that would be very helpful for for her and that in the department. So that is a part of what we're off, what we're proposing in this budget to do that. So that that's a new new wrinkle that we're adding. And then we're proposing a three percent merit pool. So again, we're a performance based organization. And so as we've typically done, is we would create a pool and then be able to disperse that into the fiscal year. We are including ten months of allocation for merit pool. So that would be the average on three percent. And then the other thing from a pay and benefits standpoint is three years ago, we did a salary study. You all may recall that from earlier in that term that you all were working in, and we implemented that. And some of the things we were we were implementing were how can we continue to stay competitive? But we come back and reassess after three years. So that three years is up. We've just completed that study with our partner. And there's a lot of good news in there in that we have many of our positions are at the market, are market competitive. And so that's a really good thing in that we've been able to, you know, keep that from being so far out of whack over three years. That's a really good thing. The other thing that that we've learned in that is that police, fire are are areas that we need to focus on improving those salary, those pay ranges and salaries there. And in addition, public works. So we've been hard on recruiting for public works to be able to compete in the market there. And so police, fire, and public works really are the areas of focus that we need to adjust salaries and pay ranges. And so we're including funds in the budget to be able to implement that and and be able to move forward on that. So that's some of the employee related changes I just wanted to run through real quick.
Jamie, how many open roles do we have in public works right now?
How many open positions? Karen, I don't have that number. Do you happen to have that number?
I think Jesse's going to kick me under the table tomorrow, but because we're going to jinx it. I think we are finally fully staffed for the first time in a couple of years. I will tell you, Commissioner Ford, that when we make offers, we're typically people are taking a pay decrease. And the data really showed that we're we're behind market with those positions.
Okay, and I think, you know, the recommendation on the shift differential makes a lot of sense. That's consistent with the private sector in terms of manufacturing jobs. So I think Penny's doing the right thing there for sure with that recommendation.
I was only worried that it might even be a little bit low in terms of the differential. I've always seen it as a percentage of pay. You know, you can say the time and a half kind of thing. So but I'll defer to her expertise and and if other local municipalities have none, then I can see that even having something is a difference. But that was the one thought I had.
I don't know the perfect number, but I sure do support the concept.
All right, sounds good. Thank you all for that feedback. We did do a needs list this year. Last year, there was no need to do one, but this year we did. And this is important because, you know, it's a collaborative approach eternally where the departments really submit, hey, here's some things we want to add to our department because we have these needs coming up. And then management team goes through them and we look at the strategic plan and we come up with what what to recommend. And so so we do have a needs list that shows, you know, here's what's recommended. Here's things we're not recommending. And then here are some things we're going to pursue some grants for. So we just some of the highlights, police shift differential, differential, we just talked about that. On the fire side, this is our strategy of adding that a full time captain position on the other engine company. So what this does, we're going to pursue a safer grant. And we're going to, we're going to see if we can get that grant. And we're hopeful we get it. And if we get it, then that's going to be a good thing. And we're including some funds in there to potentially match that grant. If we do not get it, and the rules are tailored such that we may not be able to get it going forward, then we could be in a position to where we begin to fill that position in phasing it over time. So that position, remember, is three belly buttons to work the three shifts. So we could potentially add one of those captive positions towards the latter half of the fiscal year and then add the other two positions over time. And that balances, that brings a leveling off to our fire staffing needs. And what I mean by that is that provides us with that sort of the equal staffing positions on shift at any given time for both stations, for both engine companies. And so that. And so that really does provide that leveling off of adding staff. And so there, there is an end to the adding of the staff positions, at least in the fire department in the near term. So that's what we're recommending there.
Jamie, that's also a safety issue, right? Cause it's, it's about how many people can go in and how many people can't. And, and we're kind of leaving right now, fire station number two hanging in terms of having to make some tough calls about being able to go in to a house, right? Correct me if I'm wrong.
Not, uh, not exactly. Uh, what we're doing is we're generally station two is the, is the higher staffed station. Because we have the part-time deputy chiefs, for example, that are at station one that could fill in. So that's where we're kind of having that added position would, would help us. And with our automatic mutual aid, when we have Cornelius and, uh, Mountmore and Fire Department and others join us. They, they are able to come under that agreement to help us make sure we get the, you know, have that adequate staffing. Um, but we, we're relying, we are relying on that. And so adding this position really does bring us to that sweet spot of having, having that safety level of those, those positions are filled and we have the folks on our trucks ready to go. So we do see that as a key next step, and that really does round out our staffing for fire, if that helps provide the answer to your question. Okay. The other, uh, other things, sustainability recommendations, those are important. We talked about those. And then the other thing to lift up is, uh, with the current schedule with 251 South Street, we do anticipate that the la- last part of the fiscal year proposed that we would be moving into that building and start operating. And so we're showing that we would, uh, add a position to the front there. So front administrative position to be able to serve the public and help us operationally. And then we would also add some part-time, uh, funds. So we envision, of course, the community being able to rent rooms in that building. And then those will be some after working, normal working hours operations where we would need to have a staff of managing that for, for the public and closing up when the, when the building's not being used, those kinds of things. So we are including that in there. The complete list is attached to the agenda. If anybody wants to take a look at that. So, uh, so that's the needs list. And the next thing I was going to do is turn it over to Karen to talk about the capital improvement plan.
Great. Thanks, Jamie. Um, the CIP, um, and the recommended
Sorry, Karen, before
Oh, no, you're fine.
I would also lift up the, um, increased cybersecurity. And as part of the needs list in light of what we're experiencing right now with the, um, pipeline and gas issues.
Yep.
Agreed. Uh, with the five-year CIP this year, there's really some key buckets where you'll see that investment. One of the things to note that you won't see in the presentation tonight is all those 2017 geo bond projects. We've been talking about that are set for the first wave of bond funding. Those will actually be, y'all will consider funding those officially and, um, approving the money at your next meeting. So those are actually part of this current year, and this is the look forward. I just wanted to make sure that everybody watching understood why we're not talking about things like Beatty Park and some of those other exciting projects. So the five-year CIP for, um, the town is $24.7 million. And this continues that strategic infrastructure investment, um, in some really key areas like parks, greenways, streets and public facilities. And a new category based upon your strategic goals is the investments in sustainability. So you'll see in this five-year CIP EV charging stations, a stormwater master plan. That was one of the recommendations that came out of, um, the subcommittee was how to improve stormwater, especially on the water quality side, not just the water quantity side. So some work there, um, the water quality improvements, we've been working with Mecklenburg County for some time now to get some data on the pond at Roosevelt Wilson Park. So what are the water quality improvements that can be made to help improve that, um, facility as it goes into Lake Davidson? Um, and then the last bullet you'll see there is one of the recommendations was to accelerate the, um, change out to LED streetlights. So there's funding for that. The, the plan really is for there to be a much broader community engagement around what that looks like, what that means, um, for the community. Duke is changing out those streetlights over time as they go out to LED. So it's really a question of, do you want to do a big, change them all out, um, make the change or let it happen over time? So more to come there, but there's funding in the budget depending on the outcome of, of the engagement process.
Yeah, Karen, just on that one, and I'm sure you guys will be all over it once you get there, but LED is great, but we got to make sure it's not the blue light and more of the yellow lights. Cause as I'm driving through, you know, and it's right outside of Roosevelt Wilson Park and it, the light could not be brighter outside of some of those people's homes if they, it's like, it's almost feels intentional. It's like, hey, let's see how bright we can get these lights. And that's just not good for so many different reasons. So it's
Hundreds, understood. I think the challenge there, Commissioner Ford, is what Duke Energy is going to be willing to do versus what they're going to do anyway. And then what does the community feedback look like? So there's a lot to unwrap there, but there's funding in the plan. Should the, the engagement and the, the partnership with Duke play out, if that makes sense.
Yeah. I mean, hey, if, if Duke has a problem with it, I'd love to have them in to one of the meetings and we can talk through it.
And do, do, do we know if the, uh, that blue light there at Evelyn Cars, is that, is that part of this blue light LED thing?
Oh, does she, is there one of the ones that's, uh, of, one of the faulty bulbs that needs calling in to replace?
I don't know if it's faulty or not, but her whole house is lit up blue at night.
They have a defect in a series of bulbs that got installed. Um, so we can take a look at that and call in for, um, her if we need to. Let's get it swapped out.
Yeah. I mean, I, 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 I mean, to, to Matt's point, I mean, it, I mean, if that, you know, if that's, if that's direction it's headed, it really is a, it's a nuisance. It's, it's it would be difficult to sleep at night.
Yep. We'll take a look at that. That's good feedback. Uh, from a mobility standpoint, there's two major projects slated for design monies. Uh, the proposed CIP, one is the North Main and Beatty intersection. The other is the Pot Sloane Beatty side path. Um, those were on the CIP last year and it's time to start the design work. Um, so it's great to see those moving forward. Pete, next slide. On the greenway side, the proposed CIP includes design and right away for the, um, Fisher Farm and Air Passage. That is the greenway that we've been working with in partnership with the Davidson Lands Conservity Conservancy to provide that critical link. So, so there are some monies, um, anticipated there to continue that work. And then also, um, some conceptual design for the river run to Summers Walk with some of the grant monies, um, for routing, um, to keep that greenway moving forward. I want to be clear, that's not construction dollars, but, um, on the design side.
And then this project just seems to drag on forever. I, I'd really like to have a, a, as part of this budget, a formal timeline on the river run, the Summers Walk that, that has firm lines in the sand that we're making commitments to, because we've been talking about this for eight years.
What we have right now, Commissioner Ford, um, on page 37 on your CIP schedule, and this is where it was last year as well, is construction anticipated in 2025, um, with a future bond year funding. So the design work is occurring now to help get it ready. So I think that that's a conversation if you all would like to see that accelerated in the county partnership that we could explore. But I'm not sure what the options are there.
I, I would, but I, but again, you, we've got kind of here was where we are now, and then here's the target. There's presumably a bunch of steps in between, right? That if we miss those dates that are going to push the, push the project out. So that's why I'm asking for a full project timeline, because it just seems like it's this ominous like, oh, gee, we're years away on that, which was the same four years ago when, when I started.
Okay.
We, we, yeah, we can work on that.
And then finally, um, in the CIP, what, as proposed, what you'll see is in the year 2026, we've gone ahead and slated funding for a new public works facility. This is the potential partnership with Davidson College to move public works. Uh, there's affordable housing component to that. Um, what needs to occur now is the design. Is, is there an appropriate site? Will it work? So there's funding related to that. And then finally, kind of below the line on the CIP, I wanted to raise to y'all's attention is that that need for the future fire station number one is not scheduled in the next five years, but it is a need and that land acquisition, um, is critical. So that is something else that is out there on the CIP. Now, related to the funding, this proposed budget continues the plan that you all started last year relative to the community investment fund. And that's where we allocate 50% of unassigned fund balance as of March 31st into the community investment fund. This year, that total is $667. Those are the monies that we use to advance projects to get them ready for construction. So the way that looked this year was that was the, that's where the funding for Beatty Park came. Some of the other projects that are refunded by the 2017 bonds, the Hawk Signals, et cetera. Those monies are also used for the $150,000, um, pedestrian improvement budget that's in the CIP. So that's the intent there, um, and the recommendation continues that, um, strategy. Next slide, please.
We wanted to take a minute, um, to update you on some of our, uh, other funds. The solid waste budget, we are not projecting, uh, a change to the fee in the upcoming year. Um, so that will remain at $201 for single family homes and $60 for multi-family homes. We are continuing, uh, with the $150,000 subsidy from, uh, from the general fund to offset, uh, the solid waste budget, um, which will obviously allow us to not have that increase. Um, so this is just under a $1.1 million budget for FY 2023.
Pete, before you go past that, I'd send an email this afternoon noting that I thought it was important here to highlight the fact, because we've talked about this solid waste budget, the history behind it, et cetera. And to note that one of the discussion points that to me was really important was the fact that as long as we maintain this, and correct me if I'm wrong on any of the details. But as long as we maintain this as a town item, that we are able to go in and waive that fee for those who can least afford it based on parameters that we set as a municipality. If we were to take this fee that is a, as this notes, a single family home, whether you own a home that's worth $150,000 or the 22,000 square foot house, um, in the town of Davidson, that's likely worth more than $200,000, um, that it's the same fee. But because it's a town fee, we're able to waive it versus if we were able, if we were to shift this to be a percentage of the value of the home and make that a county thing, that we would have no discretion over that. So notionally, it would be an actual increase on those who could least afford it. So that's the conversation that I remember. I just want to make sure that there are some folks doing vertical head nods here that while it's $201, if there are folks who can't afford $201 because this is a town fee, we're able to work with folks in the community to waive that fee.
Pete, how much is the total, the 200, the, the first bullet point, this total revenue from the solid waste fees? 100 million, right?
Uh, combined, uh, with the, both the single family and the multifamily, um, we are at, uh, just over $900,000.
Okay.
So Commissioner Campbell, I think what you say, um, you, you are correct regarding the waiving of the fee. Um, there is, and we can provide much more detailed information as we've had in our discussion in the past, that there is a break even point with regard to the $201. Um, and that there are, um, the, uh, the fee that a, an individual would pay if we moved the solid waste fee into the base ad valorem tax rate, um, would be determined by the taxable va- value of their home. So you are correct there as well.
So, so the $150,000 is a subsidy for the fee because we're, we're not raising the fee, right? And it's probably not a problem for this year's budget, but probably more of a lookout as solid waste fees continue, right? I mean, recycling costs are going to go up. Right now you're supplementing or subsidizing 15% roughly 15% of the total solid waste budget from the general fund. As that gets closer to 50/50, the validity of the solid waste fee itself is going to kind of come under question, right? So, because the intent at one point in time was solid waste fee equals solid waste costs. And it's a one for one thing, right? And then we, we got a little out of whack a couple of years ago where we needed 40 grand to cover it because of the, the increase in the recycling fees. And Jim, I'm going to pause here for your opportunity to ask for the lease to get added to the budget.
A mobile leave vacuum is what Jim's looking for. Matt. For you, Commissioner Ford, you are, you, you are correct about the fee structure and whether we should be dealing with increasing the fee or doing it differently. So that is a, a future discussion.
Yeah, not, not something for this budget, but I, I would, I would ask that the next budget, this comes up a little bit sooner because it's gonna, it's gonna go different, right? And, and then effectively Jane, right now it's 85% discretionary, 15% non-discretionary. Cause the other 150K is coming from ad valorem taxes effectively.
Exactly. And, and just the, the final thing is just making sure that we continue to get the word out um, to folks who cannot afford that $201 to make sure that we're proactively um, seeking ways to reach out to those folks, um, versus having to be reactive.
All right, Pete.
Excellent. So the stormwater budget, last year's stormwater budget was 250,000 based on the historical, uh, collections from our stormwater fees. Um, we are projecting a $260,000, uh, total revenue and therefore expenditure. Um, this covers, you'll recall this budget covers the street sweeper for town. The, there is a Luisa contract, uh, with Mecklenburg County for stormwater. Um, and then we also handle, uh, individual stormwater projects, um, over the, uh, upcoming fiscal year. Um, staff will be coming back to, uh, with the development of a five-year, uh, stormwater plan for you to consider. Um, and look at, uh, a structured use of that fund going forward. Um, and then also making sure that we have the fee structure properly, uh, situated as well. Um, in this year's affordable housing fund, um, it does include $140,000 for down payment assistance. That's a combination of 90,000, uh, from the federal home program, which is, uh, administered through, uh, the city of Charlotte. Additionally, it includes $50,000, uh, of, um, down payment assistance from Payment and Lou. Um, we've included $70,000 for critical home repairs, uh, $40,000 for enhanced program monitoring of the affordable housing program, and then, uh, $25,000 for program administration as well.
And Pete, this is coming directly out of the Affordable Housing Fund, which is funded through the Payment and Lou, not out of the general fund, correct?
Uh, correct. This is funded out of Payment and Lou and 90,000, um, of the $275,000 budget comes, uh, from, from the city of Charlotte through the home program. So fees, fee schedule changes, we have three, uh, areas this year. At the recommendation of the livability board, uh, the manager's budget is recommending, uh, an increase of $50 to the fee. So that would be $150, um, in total for residents. This increase, uh, will fund some of the, um, some of those racks that were built a few years back are starting to require some maintenance. Um, and then also some equipment replacement as well. Uh, the, in the planning fee, we are actually adding a certificate of appropriateness for a sign fee. Um, this will, this is really to conform with the existing sign permit fee of $65. So this will allow the planning department, um, to have a similar, uh, sign request fee within the historical district. Um, and additionally, the fire department has requested, um, that we make our apparatus use fees tied directly to uh, the FEMA reimbursement rates for those fees. Um, this is not all just an increase. It actually was a little bit of, uh, increase and decrease for the various, um, types of apparatus that we have. We do have ladder, pumper and, um, uh, and tanker. Um, so this is, uh, this just keeps us in line with what those FEMA reimbursement rates are, uh, going forward.
Hey, have we done anything with the Payment and Lou? I mean, cost of lumber has tripled over the last however many months. Housing prices are skyrocketing. Um, to say that we're holding our Payment and Lou fee and not moving it up. To say that we're holding our Payment and Lou fee and not moving it up kind of with inflation or with, you know, changes in, in the valuation of homes is, uh, seems like we're kind of standing still when everybody else is running past us on that.
And we did adjust that fee last year, I believe, with the, with the revaluation of the property. The, the next revaluation is scheduled for, for, they're on a four-year schedule rather than an eight-year schedule. We can take a look at a methodology for that possible increase to that fee. Obviously, the, it very logical to utilize the, to utilize the revaluation of property performed by the, by the county, but we can take a look at that.
Yeah, no, understood. I mean, it just, i- if anybody can look me in the eye and say the cost to buy a house in Davidson is exactly the same as it was a year ago when we did this, I'd, I'd be very interested to know where they've been, if they've tried to buy a house in the last two to three months. I mean, Rusty, as a realtor, I'm pretty sure you can attest to that. I, I mean, I'd, I'd rather, I'd rather add some sort of inflationary, if nothing else, I'd rather add some sort of inflationary factor of 3% and then go back and readjust from year, year one to year four, when the revaluations do and have it be just a, you know, a total recalibration if need be. But to do nothing for four years in a period of, you know, we're hyperinflation, especially in building and home prices seems not aligned to the, the fee structure.
Good feedback and we'll, we'll take a look at that and bring that back to you.
I'd ask all the other commissioners to weigh in on it as well.
Yeah, I, I agree on that concept and then come back to Pete for, you know, whether you set an annual percentage rate. And then, you know, I, I, we did the right thing with making a tie to the, the county increase based on the valuation. But again, to ignore it in between the timeframe and, and we're just lucky that it's a four-year versus, or at least in this case, lucky that it's a four-year versus eight-year delay in the revaluation. But if we did it on an annual thing and then use the, the, the valuation as the level set. And if we've gone too high, we've gone too high and then to come back. But I think we can keep, at least keep pace with, with market values in order to do right by those who choose to the, use the Payment and Lou.
I think this is the right approach. A, a modest inflationary projection is a lot better than a big surprise down the road.
And agreed, true it up at year four, right? A true up.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Pete, I'm also, that sounds fun, but I'm also curious, and you may not know this, about the watercraft storage fee. Do you know a percentage of residents versus non-residents who utilize that?
I have, Leslie and I happen to have talked about that. We, we, we actually are 100% residents. That, that, as you know, those slots are allocated through a lottery process. And we have enough requests that come from residents to fill up all of the slots.
I would urge us to stay on that path, too. It, it would just be a shame for somebody to put their name in the hat for a slip for a kayak or canoe and not make the lottery in lieu of a, a non-resident getting it.
My, my understanding, and I will make sure if I am misspeaking, but I believe that the lottery initially is done only for residents. And we have always filled all the slots by that initial lottery.
And Pete and Leslie, and this is just a stream of consciousness, and there may be a reason why not to do it, but it just seems that, that that might be, those types of projects might be Eagle Scout projects in the making. So just a thought.
Duly noted.
Jane Sterling Martin was the one who built, built most of those originally along with Roy Alexander, I think. But Sterling has done the yeoman's work on those for many years. So yes, I agree with you.
I just know that we've had, we've had scouts in search of projects and in, in some cases not been able to provide them with projects. And so if this is one of those places where, you know, any of the things that we're doing with that could be potentially, we ought to take a look at it.
That's a great idea, Jen. I think Rusty was also looking for a fire pit, too, weren't you, Rusty?
Absolutely. That would be awesome. I, I'm, I'm good. I, I think at the end of the day, that idea, Jane, we, I've had so many scouts and scouts parents reach out to me to, that want to build benches at bus stops and things like that. And then all of a sudden I fall into the, the whole rabbit hole of MTC talking about engineering the bus stops and sidewalks, et cetera, et cetera. And, and then we end up with a bolt-on seat on two of our bus stops in town and that's all we've got. And we have people waiting for buses and they're sitting on electrical transformers and things like that. So we'll have to tackle that at a later date. But, you know, refurbishing and adding to the kayak slips because, you know, both of these are uber popular for Lake Corneas and Lake Davidson at Park and the Nature Preserve boat. So, you know, it, it's evidenced by, if you look, and, and Jim, you know this from where you live. I can tell you this from where my mother-in-law lives over at Spinnaker Reach. There's still 50 to 75 to 100 kayaks that are at those private neighborhood areas, not counting the ones that are accessible to public. So, you know, it, it's, you know, if we can get scouts to help this out and help defer the cost, that would be awesome, too. Pete, anything else you got?
I am happy to report that Leslie did confirm that both the resident usage and lottery priority information was correct, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
So this is the point, and I think Jamie's going to cover some of our next steps. But this is the point where I always like to thank all the hard work that management team has put into getting this budget to this point. This process starts actually in late November, early December for management team. And they really do so much of the heavy lifting when it comes to projecting what their needs are and what their continuation budgets looks like. So this is a, we're a small group presenting today, but we are, are lifted up by the, the hard work of management team and getting this budget to you guys tonight. So thank you very much.
Well said, Pete. So next steps, review the information. It's out on our website. We have the budget and economic development public hearing at our, the town board's May 25th board meeting. And you'll recall the nuance with the law about calling out the economic development expenditures with the public hearing. So it's the budget and plus the economic development part. So that's required. We have the public hearing. We can have discussion with the board at that May 25th meeting. And then we ask for approval of the budget ordinance at the June 8th board meeting. And so folks can weigh in through the public hearing, May 25th. You can email budget@townofdavidson.org. And that's all we've got to present to you tonight and happy to answer any questions. Or if there's more information that you need from us, let us know what we can do to help get you what you need as we move towards approval of budget this year.
I have one quick question related to the CIP, and I asked Jamie this this morning, but wanted to share it with the, the full board, which is that a citizen raised the issue on social media about the, Jamie, what would you call that? The West Davidson, or excuse me, East Davidson roundabout? And the lack of plantings in that roundabout? And that seemed like a real legitimate concern to me. So I want, I raised it to Jamie this morning and it sounds like the CIP is the place for that. Do you want to speak further to it, Jamie?
Sure can, yes. And we'd had, we've had some citizen input on, on developing something there over time. And so we have included having that, that done, having landscaping in 2024, $50,000 in the CIP. And the thinking was we would approach NC DOT and, because it's their, their roundabout. And we would work with them and do some kind of public process on what we could put there landscaping-wise and what they'll allow, because we'll need an encroachment agreement from them to be able to do anything there. And so we would get started on that in this coming fiscal year proposed. And so Commissioner Roush and Michael is bringing up a good point. If there was a way to accelerate that $50,000 to actually implement sooner, if the board's interested in doing that, we can take a look at adjusting the CIP to try to make that happen.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'd support it. I also think, you know, we have this tree fund as well. And if it is planting trees, I think we need to start thinking about thoughtful ways to do that. And, you know, tree-lined streets are kind of consistent with what we have. So wherever there are areas where there's open space that allows for tree planting to continue to line the trees of Davidson for everybody who drives through it to enjoy, I think would be a good use of funds for it personally.
Well, I think too, that's one of the, that's one of the entry points to town. I think finally, after years of, of, and, and no fault of public works, but at our roundabouts at the, the circles at 30, finding the right mix of landscaping that didn't grow too tall, where it blinded you from seeing pedestrians and other vehicles, has been almost a trial and error until we came up with what would actually work there. And the aesthetics are attractive when you, when you hit the, the two roundabouts. The ones at the interstate are still barren. But the, the two at, at Jotun and whatever the other one is at the Davidson Clinic and Homewood Suites are, are attractive now. And I guess as attractive as a roundabout can physically be. But, you know, that one coming in from River Run right there where East Rocky River and Concord Road and Davidson Concord, there's a lot of people that come into town that way. And it's been great for the promotion that, that, that we have used as a town for wearing a mask and social distancing and everything else during the pandemic. But it should be nice to see something out there besides what we look at right now. And I, I, I do understand that the dynamics of that being DOT's property. But we all know how DOT landscapes and whatever it is, it's going to be far inferior to what we would like to do. So that, so.
I've said it before and I'll say it again, Rusty, it won't be the first or the last time we've paid for something that NC DOT should have paid for.
Exactly.
And I, I'd also, I mean, same thing with some of the signage, right? I mean, town of Davidson, and, and, you know, they're, they're pretty beat up and have years of pollen on them that have kind of glossed over it. I mean, I, I, I'd love to have Doug or Jesse go through and identify signs that just need replaced and freshened up. I mean, there's some of them that have that reflective coating that's fallen off, fallen off. And just a little, little spring cleanup while we're still in spring wouldn't be too terrible either.
We can, we can take a look at that. We know we're proposing wayfinding signage, but I think that's different, Karen, than what.
It is. Yeah, the wayfinding is more about the greenways and parks access as the network builds out.
I like the start, though. I passed by the, the Mimosa Cemetery sign that went up that says, please respect the cemetery. It's not a park or a playground. So appreciate that, seeing that today.
Thank you. Jesse worked hard on that.
All right. Any other budgetary questions at this time? I think we've had several more discussions before we get to where we need to be. But Pete, I can't thank you enough and staff enough to bring in this, this much information to disseminate to start with. So, any other comments or questions at this time? Okay, if not, we move on. To item D. Pete, thank you again.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner.
Item D is Lyndon Mills Property LLC donation of land to the town of Davidson. I'm going to turn this over to Town Manager Jamie Justice.
All right. Thanks, Mayor and Commissioners. So we've received a request from the proposed developer for the Lyndon Mill Adaptive Reuse Redevelopment Project. They've done a survey and they're proposing really to enable the redevelopment adaptive reuse project to happen there and for them to do a brownfields agreement with the state of North Carolina with Department of Environmental Quality. The lot lines need to be fixed. So what that means is, is the survey that they've done shows that the parcel actually includes town roadways and some of that park property. So that's what they're proposing to do. This is items for discussion tonight only. We would ask the town board to accept the donation at the next meeting. And what Betsy's pulled up here is the, is the drawing that shows kind of where, where the impacts are. So I, I will say this, this is not uncommon. We've dealt with this off and on over, over time where we find little strange things like this and, and we, we find every effort to try to fix it to make sure that we've got, you know, the proper ownership and right of way and all those things. So this does happen. And so this is important from a public policy perspective. If we can figure out how to straighten this out, this, this will be very good. And, and in addition, of course, this, this adaptive reuse project and historic preservation, one of the town board's goals. So that's an important aspect, too. So, so that's, that's the why about this. So bottom line, what this shows is the area in orange, which is mostly Sloan Street, part of Depot Street, that is, that is property that they want to donate to the town so that where the town would have, have that for the roadway. The property in green is mostly Eden Street, and that's on the south side of the mill site itself. And so again, kind of getting that roadway under our town ownership will be the right thing. And then the last parcel is in blue. It's a triangle parcel. And that's on the west side of Sloan Street and kind of from Ruby Houston's house on towards Houston Street into the park. And that area is a grassy area, kind of slopes down to the drainage ditch right there that runs down towards Roosevelt Wilson Park. And the parcel right beside that is owned by the town. So this is a parcel that is on the other side of Sloan Street that they're proposing to donate to the town. And what we would propose is it would just be incorporated into that Roosevelt Wilson, kind of that extension of Roosevelt Wilson Park that runs along that, that drainage ditch. Right now, we have that kids amphitheater close to that tree that's on that parcel just adjacent to this blue parcel. So it would be a natural thing to accept that. We did consult town attorney Marion Swan and environmental attorney about this. And just to take a look, because the, the unknowns with the asbestos, right? So the blue parcel has been tested and is negative for asbestos. So the orange and green, those are under the roadway. So those have not been tested. And what the state, DEQ and EPA folks say is, you know, when something is capped like that under asphalt or concrete or something, that that, that is a, an appropriate environmental remediation situation so that that is, that's acceptable. And so the way we've thought about this is the roads need to be town roads. It just makes sense. And we, we know about the concerns of the asbestos in that area. And so any, you know, any infrastructure project we would do, publicly do over there, we would know, we would assume that there would be asbestos and we would test. And so taking these roads into ownership and us maintaining it like we've been maintaining for all these years, that we just, we know what we would be accepting and we understand what that looks like and what we would need to do in terms of remediation or any asbestos risk exposure. So, so that's the thinking in terms of why the town accepting these, these properties would make sense from staff's standpoint. And wanted to bring this to the board's attention and happy to answer any questions or thoughts that you all have.
Good. Jamie, I got, I got two quick questions. Number one, the Sloan Street section should have, have, since the new water line came up Sloan Street and, and impacted a lot of that street, surely there was some soil that was, was tested and, and either tested negative or was abated, one of the two during the process of running the water lines. Am I correct?
Yes, you are correct, Mayor. I, I don't, do not believe that the entire roadway was tested. It would have been just for.
Okay. And my, my second, my second question is about indemnification. Okay, and my, my second, my second question is about indemnification of the town. The, the blue area i- is downhill from the asbestos fill. And it's been tested negative. I, I, I see that the, you know, looking at, I've got the map pulled up on my iPad so I can blow it up. So it looks like most of the green area. Except for the northwest termination, looks like it's all under pavement. Am I correct?
Yes, and I'm glad you mentioned that. On the Eden Street, we're asking them to adjust the survey to make sure that green section, the Eden Street section. That that we are accepting the asphalt roadway and that's it.
I just don't want to inherit a problem that, that is separate of whatever they're going to do. To, to mitigate. The, the asbestos that's currently on the site. I don't want us to inherit our, our own problem.
That makes sense, Mayor. And I think that's the intent here is that the developer wants, needs to do the brownfields agreement with the state for the property that they control. And so they will be able to do that. And then the donation to us will be the property, the, the roadways that we would then control. So I think there is a clear separation there.
And would there be indemnification from the developer to the town?
Uh, Mary Ann, just asking a question there, so. Yep, Mary Ann, I don't know if you, I can't recall if we've discussed that. Do you have any insight on that?
No, we have not discussed that.
Okay, okay. We can, we can certainly talk about that. I mean, we, we'd have to get into that a little bit. I think from our perspective, I think it was, we, we understand what we're, we're taking here in terms of, of that part of it. But I understand what you're saying in terms of the, the mill site itself and kind of decoupling it from that.
Right. Okay, I mean, I just, you know, and, and again, I'm not trying to throw a monkey wrench into the, the timeline that they're working on. I just, I, I just want to make sure that if, if we take this. And it's really a minuscule piece of property that we're talking about to straighten up the, the property lines. And if, if we had to bait everything that we were taking in, it's still, you know, a lot of that would be, would fall under the EPA. Program that's going on anyway, so it's probably no expense for us in some aspects. But I, I just want to be safer than sorry. How's that?
Fair enough. We'll research that.
And Jamie, just clarifying, I know that this was about cleaning up some stuff because of how you find it. But we haven't been acting as a town over the past however many decades. As though these roads were private property. We've been acting as though, you know, we didn't go seek permission from the property owner. When work was going on on Sloan Street or on Eden. So this was one of those that we went back and in this process, they discovered that what was already considered to be. A town maintained road happened to be on private property. Is that?
That, that is correct. Until this survey and the developer brought this to light. Yeah, we've been maintaining those, those streets as public roads. So that's the new information.
Yeah, align on moving forward and getting this property developed in the right way. And to Rusty's point, let's just make sure we're not, there's no unintended consequences to the town of Davidson. But love to get this project going.
Agreed. Okay, are there any other feedback or questions about that?
If we don't have, thank you and, and we can get a couple of those boxes checked off, I think we're in a better place for that. So if, if Jamie, between you and Mary Ann, if you guys will ask those questions or circle back and then we'll go from there.
Sounds good.
Okay. Next item is item A, which is the downtown gathering space phase two update. And Betsy is going to bring our project manager Doug Wright in. I will say before Doug gets on, I have heard nothing but compliments from people. The, the few times I've been down and, and eaten and been able to sit out on the, the brick mezzanine. In the tables that we got with our PPE money and. It's just a nice environment up there right now. So I talked to several of the vendors at the farmer's market. They are much happier right now than they were during construction. So it's, it, it, it's, phase one has been very well received. With that, Doug, I'm turning it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. I have Craig Lewis joining me tonight. And Craig is with Skantec, who's the design consultant on this project. And he's been with us from the beginning, as you know, is a long time Davidson resident. Thanks for joining us. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here. All right, well, get started. The downtown gathering space is, is project to improve downtown area behind Summit Coffee, Pickle Peach. And includes the area that's used by the, the farmer's market. We developed a conceptual design for the prop, for the area over a number of years. And it had sticker shock when, when we put it out to bid. And the design came in over eight hundred thousand dollars. So we started a value engineering process. And, and that led to, to our phase one project, which was completed on April thirtieth. There is one item remaining to be done and that is the light poles installed and, and that's coming very soon. So the phase one project included moving this playground here from its original location, which was over here. We expanded these brick walkways through the area. In this area here, we built a, a large brick patio and we've got tables out there now with umbrellas. That's being heavily utilized. There's an electrical transformer over here and we did sort of some beautification work on that. And there's an area, a kind of an area that was a giant hole with a wall around it. Near Davidson Family Medicine and garbage compactor kind of behind Wells Fargo. This is part of this project. We, we filled that hole and bought the area up to gray. Removed that wall there and, and put sod in, so just making that area there a, a lot more useful. And it is getting used during the farmer's market and other times. Now, we also put irrigation in the area. The basis backbone of irrigation system that's working out there now and can be expanded. And provided some water hydrants for use during the farmer's market or during events. So all that was part of, part of phase one. As we look at phase two, one of the elements here in the concept. Is this kind of large gray area that was originally intended to be. A material called decomposed granite and it was intended to convert. Over half of the existing parking lot to just gathering space. Seating, farmer's market tables, et cetera. So as we look at that for phase two, the major concern we have is, is coming from vendors in the area. Our contractor tells us that the conversion of the parking lot to this raised gathering area. Is, is a ninety to a hundred and twenty day project that would require closing off this entire parking area. And just in talking with the vendors, we feel like that's sort of an unreasonable project to start. Right now with, with them working their way out of, out of the pandemic and the economic impact that's had on their businesses. Phase, phase one was a little bit difficult. We had the area fenced in, but we got it done quickly. We got that done in sixty days. But, but not without a little bit of pain for the merchants. But this would be significant and we feel like it's a bad time to do it right now. The other problem is that it, it is substantial while some parking here. Merchants were using this parking for, for curbside pickup during the pandemic. And they also use it for deliveries. And, and if this conversion leaves us with a fairly small parking area. It might make it harder vehicles to turn around and, and other uses. So we are proposing that, that this piece shown on the conceptual drawing, the, the lemonade from the phase two project. Which leaves us really with this pergola here. So phase two, what we are proposing is to build this pergola. And, and follow up with a landscaping project in the fall. Fall is really the best time to do landscape. So with that, I wanted to take a look at some of the concepts that Stantec has developed for this pergola. So I'm going to go to another PDF because it will look a little bit better than, than this PowerPoint. Everybody see all right? Yeah, so this is, this is the design that, that Stantec has proposed for the pergola that we just looked at. So here you see these steel tables are the back of Summit. That's kind of the end of their property. This, this capstone here is sort of the edge of the playground. And over here, kind of at this end of the, of the drawing, is the existing brick patio. That's been put in, being heavily used. So this, this pergola structure would be about forty-five feet long in this direction. And about twelve feet deep this way. It is about ten feet high. We'll see some other elevation profiles. But we've got sort of ten brick columns here. It's divided into, into five bays. And, and a wooden trellis structure over the top that's made out of wood. So this is, this is just wood that's been painted kind of the charcoal gray. Like you can see, there's a little capstone here on top of these columns. So this is the rendering that we looked at. We'll look at a couple more versions of that.
Doug, what's the material of that capstone on the column, on the brick column?
It's, it's masonry capstone. Craig, do you, any, anything more to add to that?
It would match the same material that's around the playground right now.
See, I'm trying to track down the other, the other draw in here because it's a good one. See that? All right. Great. Okay, so this is a, this is a night view here. That's the same one we just looked at. We go over here, this is the top view here. And you can see sort of these five bays that we, that I have described here. This is a concrete pad on the bottom with this brick detail here. In, embedded in the pad and you can kind of see the structure here. As mentioned, it's forty-five feet long. This, this is the existing brick patio. And about twelve feet deep here. So there's kind of the top view. This is a few sections side view. You can kind of see this is the long side. Nine feet to the, to the bottom of the trellis here. And this is the M view here. So it, it's, it's nine feet along, going in the long way. And then here, these, these bays are each eight feet wide. They can significantly hold a, a farmer's market vendor. So those are the renderings. And, you know, I think it's a great looking structure and we've gotten very positive feedback. For those that have seen this already. Going back to the, going back to my slides here. So if, if we were to decide to proceed with the pergola and landscaping. We would be asking for a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars budget amendment from CAPA. So that, that would, that would be five hundred and thirty-four thousand spent altogether for the project. That includes a hundred thousand dollar state grant that we received. And a two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar budget amendment that was passed back in November. We still have some of those funds left. So the budget quote for the pergola and landscaping is two hundred thousand dollars. With the leftover from the two seventy-five plus one fifty-nine, we could go ahead and get that done. So, so with that, I'm glad to answer any questions. I, I would, I don't know, Craig, if you had anything to add to that?
The only thing we have is we've got one utility manhole that we have sort of at the end of this picture by where that garbage can is. You can see next to it in the yard. We have to sort of work around that. So we haven't quite figured that one out yet, but everything else is. Pretty straightforward. We may not be using wood for the arbor these days. It might be a trucks material, something plastic.
Trucks may actually end up being cheaper at this point.
It might be. Yeah, I mean, we're actually seriously considering that on our end, so.
Same steel might be cheaper at this point.
Yeah, I mean, truck at least will last a lot longer too. I mean, is there a way to do something with the parking lot? Whether it's repaving it or doing some sort of stamped concrete to get it so that it flows? So got it. We don't want to raise the parking lot up. But if you go back to the original design picture. The eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollar picture. Is there a way to create, to spend a little bit more money and do something in terms of repaving the parking lot? To get it to flow more like this?
Well, so I, I was planning on resurfacing the lot this summer. But that doesn't change the lot a lot, a lot. It doesn't change the lot very much. It, it just would clean it up. So, you know, we, I, I, I don't, I don't, I don't know how we would significantly change the lot to. I guess to enhance the pedestrian flow. Is that, is that the question?
Yeah, I mean, it's just, it's still a parking lot. I mean, it, maybe I'm just asking for too much here, but it's just. You know, there's no way it's, it's going to be cost effective, but if you did kind of like a cobblestone or something in that parking lot to kind of get it to flow or brick.
And kind of like what you have at, at some crosswalks that appears to be a stamp function. And again, I'm, I'm guessing that it's more, you know, concrete versus asphalt. Because I don't know that there's a stamping process for asphalt given its consistency. But yeah, I mean, I think, I think that's what Matt is envisioning is something where, you know, you do have a decorative looking difference. Than just black asphalt.
And even if it's the back half of it, right? Almost similar to this where it's asphalt and then some sort of decorative. Pavement. I mean, they, Jane, I know they did it in Burke Dale, right? And the, and the crosswalks there, that they made it look like brick. So I mean, there's definitely.
Yeah, we have some in town, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, so, I mean, we, we think of that in a couple ways. We could think of it in a way that maybe. Directed pedestrians through the area. I, I think it, it's a fairly low volume traffic lot and, and we're not seeing a lot of those type of problems. Thinking about sort of an aesthetic approach. One, one drawback to the stamped concrete is that people, it can be difficult for people using walkers. You know, that they're using a, a device and something to help them get around. It's just a bumpy surface to roll over. They're, they're generally not the best thing for crosswalks. We do have them in town here and that's, that's sort of the study decision. It's maybe not the best crosswalk approach. But that's, that's one consideration for this area. If people are, are using them with, with walkers.
It's a great point, Doug, on, on safety for the, you know, for people using a walker. So fair enough. But if, I, I would just ask you to go back and look and see if there's a way to jazz it up more than just parking lot. Repaving and putting new stripes on it. And then here it shows steps kind of cascading out on the back to the, to the green there. Is that, I didn't see that in the other drawing, so is that not needed?
That was my question too, because based on those stadium stairs that we see coming off the back of the pergola. If, if those are ten inch wide. If, if those are ten inch risers, it looks about like a thirty inch fall there. And, and what do we do with that? I mean, I didn't, even on your, your elevation that you showed from the side, it didn't look like there was that much fall. And maybe this is just the artist's rendering, so it's conceptually, it, it's not that much. Go to that, this, the second one on the in shot. No, go, go up one. Yeah, that one right there. See, you see that fall? And that, that doesn't picture any kind of stairs versus this rendering of the stadium stairs that come off the, the open end of the back of this thing. And I'm, I'm worried about the terminus. Is it going to be completely enclosed on the backside? So you've got a, a twelve to twenty inch fall that some kid flips over the wall? Or is it going to be open with the stadium stairs coming off of it?
We were planning on just regrading that area so that it would be a gentle slope coming off the backside and not doing stairs off the back. As you see by the rendering, we assume that we would put seating as sort of the back part of that area. Is one option. So it's just a, don't really see a reason to go. And at one point we had talked about using this as another music or performance space that we then have backed off from. So that's why we didn't really consider a need to go off the backside in a real way.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not opposed to, aesthetically, I like the look of the stadium stairs coming off of it. I was just, was questioning the, the two different renderings I'm seeing here. Because, you know, I'm, I'm one of those people that, and I'm not one of the vendors there, but I would have loved to have seen this pedestrian friendly area be expanded and lose those five or six, seven parking spaces. In, in favor of being more pedestrian welcoming and, and really folding in all the vendors into a larger open space with Pickle Peach and Summit and, and Ben and Jerry's having more physical outdoor space for people, but.
I, I, I agree, Rusty. You know, when I, when I, when I look at, you know, th- this is, this is the primary gathering spot for town. This is the primary social experience in Davidson. And, you know, to both the comments that, that Matt, you made earlier about, I'd be less concerned about the aesthetic, but you've got an opportunity. If you guys will, will flip back to that aerial view. You know, you've got, you've got an opportunity there to create what is a little bit like a plaza or a square.
The original was non-rendering, Doug.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going back there.
Yeah, a plaza or a square where you, you know, you, you, and the seating and the tables and what is already there. And then for the farmer's market, as Rusty said, you've got the opportunity to to kind of have that all collective in one space. You know, my concern with the pergola and, and, you know, I, I mean, I, I like the design. I mean, I think it looks good. But, you know, it's, it's silos and it, to me, it speaks to the opposite of gathering space. It's like, it's a little bit more, you, 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 you know, you, you tuck in there and there's a bench and it's more of a, maybe of a solitary kind of experience as opposed to a social experience. So, you know, I guess my, my feedback on that would be the verse would be more of the build out of that, that square area, lose those couple of parking spaces. And then I liked what, what was said just a minute ago about that maybe being more of a performance space in the sense that it would be more open as opposed to more siloed. You know, I think it's fair to, to push this back maybe until after the summer to give, give, you know, the vendors and everybody else the opportunity to enjoy it in the summer and then maybe do this in the off-season months. But I guess those would be my, my comments.
I think for, for some of those folks, there's not an off-season, which, you know, you've got to work around. And I think the minor inconvenience that we saw from Phase One and, and we did it in such a timely manner. You know, and, and I, I may make some of the vendors mad and I don't intend to make anybody mad for saying this. But I think that at the end of the day, what we've seen just with Phase One has been advantageous to all the vendors there. And I think if we can move, you know, if this thing takes, what was the estimate that you were talking about, Doug, as far as how long this would close this parking lot off to get this done?
Well, what, what we heard from the contractor that completed Phase One was ninety to a hundred and twenty days. And it was a closure for the, the whole lot. You know, they're, they just, the bringing materials in, in and out, they can't come, come through this way.
Right.
Anymore. So it would basically be, be closing the whole lot. So a pretty, pretty big impact for the, the gray area modifying the, the existing lot in that way. So and, and I, I don't have a cost specifically for that, but I could get that. Also, you know, I think we'd probably be looking at, at double what we're asking for tonight, if, if not more.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be okay with going with this with Phase Two, but with full intentions of, okay, let everybody kind of recover from COVID and get back to normal, whatever that new normal is going to be. But with the, with stated intent that the Phase Three kind of, and David put it very well, which is kind of that kind of town square look and feel. It's important and I think it's worth losing four parking spaces or eight parking spaces or whatever it is. So I mean, if, if we have to eat this elephant one bite at a time in three bites instead of two, I'd rather move forward with Phase Two, but also say, Doug, just like we gave you the direction to move forward with Phase Two at the end of Phase One, say, go, go fast and do it. I would give you the same direction on Phase Three, which is, this is, this is not the end. This is just the middle point.
David, I'm hearing what you're saying too about that sort of town square aspect. And so I'm rolling it over in my mind. But I, well, y'all can't see my cursor. I'm moving my cursor around. But I wonder if the pergola provides kind of a terminus, if you're looking sort of from Main Street and how that kind of enclosed solid-ish, solid-ish helps that courtyardy feel to it. So that would be one comment. My second comment may be to, and I hope I don't regret this, but maybe to advocate for those stairs on the back of the pergola, assuming we keep it on the back of the pergola. Because I'm thinking about all the kids who, who particularly at the pergolas kind of facing the other way in terms of the benches or whatever. Because all those kids who run around the green and I can see moms and dads and caregivers kind of perching on the stairs, watching those kids run around versus the rest of it is, is back facing to that green area. Does that make sense? The steps, so the steps, if that works from a topo perspective and from a design perspective visually, the utility, the utilitarian nature of parents, caregivers, et cetera, being able to sit there and watch those kids might be nice.
Autumn, I agree with you a hundred percent. And I think, you know, I mean, we have a big, brand new deck that we just put in and we still sit on the steps of the deck, watching the kids play in the yard versus on the, the furniture that we, that we had to get for the deck. So I, I think it's a great idea. And to your point, it makes it a little bit more open and, and continues. Because that backyard area where all the kids run and play is important. You don't want to close that off.
Yeah, I, I think just from a practical standpoint, we, we have to look at where, you know, that elevation ends up being twelve feet out from the existing patio and, and how high it is. You know, if it's high enough to accomplish, to accommodate a couple of steps, that's an option. But if it's six inches above the existing grade, then we bring dirt in, you know, we, I wouldn't advocate removing dirt to install steps. I mean, so I think that, that's kind of what we would look at. But if your recommendation was for us to, to to be oriented towards steps, if, if it works out on the site, then that's certainly something that we can work with.
I would say there's probably enough slope there to accommodate one or two stairs. I, I don't know, but I, you know, just from, from being there as much as you're there, you, you know how it, 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 it slopes quickly in a short amount of time. Doug, one other question I've got with this Phase Two. So we're, we're, I, I know we, we deferred extending the brick mezzanine on towards Town Hall to get some things worked out from, from like behind Pickle Peach, if you will, is, is part of that? Part of Phase Two going to extend this brick mezzanine further on up towards Town Hall? Or is that for a later date?
That's, that's going to be for a later date. That, you know, we, we do not own that property. We have an easement over it where the existing walkway is located. And that, that's where the walkway is now. So if, if that's something that we can work out in the future, we, we would try. We've not been able to for, you know, on the timeline of this project.
Okay.
Greg, do you have thoughts on that topo and the stairs, no stairs, et cetera?
I think there are a couple of options. We wanted to wait till construction was complete so we could get a sense of the spot grades that are out there now. I think there are a couple of options. We've got the sort of, you know, this more sort of traditional cement stairs that are out there. Another option is we can have more sort of gentle grade back, landscape timber, you know, sort of terraced space as an option. And there's different things we can look at. But as Doug said, we just, we need to get back out there and, and take some spot grades to see what we're working with. I could also add, if I may, the discussion about the parking lot space. One of the things we've talked about all along is it's a really nice space when everyone's back there, but we don't want to make it too large so that when no one's out there, it feels vacuous. So there's a balance that we're trying to strike to be able to do that. And so one of the things that we have explored, particularly on the parking area, is still allowing it to be parking, you know, during the day, during the week, but being able to close it off. So really what we're talking about is bringing that parking lot to grade and the grade of the plaza that's out there today. So we've got some drainage issues. Right now, as many of you all know, that it kind of slopes down very quickly. We've got a drainage grate that's right there behind the utility box that we kind of need to resolve. But there is still a way, we had a concept that still allows for parking to be there, but allows a space to feel more together, to be able to do that. So if you'd like for us to just explore that conceptually, we can do that. It's still going to have to close everything off and redo the drainage and everything else, as Doug said, but what gets back there can still be sort of multipurpose.
Well, I think all of us, Craig, when, when we saw the original rendering, it was more than, wow, pretty colors. We're like, that's, we like that, you know? I think we, we got over a lot of the hurdles with AstroTurf and things like that. But, you know, it, it's, when, when you look at this being singly the most used space in downtown Davidson. I mean, and, and I, I would invite you to tell me the days when there's nobody back there. And I don't mean that as a challenge. I mean, it's just, it, you know, it, they're, they're, it's going to have to be raining for nobody to be back there. And a lot of times when it is raining, people are on the stage behind Summit because they're not going to leave that space. So there's, there's those diehards. So I, I would say that, you know, that not just from an aesthetic viewpoint, but from use of space. The enhancements that we end up with are, are going to be enhancements that are, that are going to be appreciated by not only the merchants, but, and the residents, but people that come to town to visit because they're going to say, damn, what a cool space this is. I wish our town had this.
We had any feed, preliminary feedback from the farmer's market in terms of flow and how it's worked for them so far?
Yeah, they, they seem to be pretty happy with it. I am talking with Justin and Courtney on a pretty regular basis during construction and, and looking at this. So it, it certainly is working well out in the ground. I, I know people that are vendors in the farmer's market and they like it a lot. So I, I think it's working very well for them. There are vendors located where the pergola is shown, so we'd have to take that into consideration. But we've already been in contact with the, the market staff about that. So I think that's something that we could do and, and it would work well.
Doug, is there a way that as you're moving forward with this, especially as we're talking about creating a Phase Three? I really don't want to add anything to what has already been said because I, I pretty much agree with most of the comments. But I look to wonder whether there is a technology solution for creating that divider to Craig's point that, you know, you want to have a space that can be utilized for parking at one point in time, but then pedestrian. And I look to places where we've created systems where I call it a bollard, but something that is below the ground when it needs to be, but then can be above the ground. And essentially you would have the ability to press a switch to have something come up and raised. And perhaps it's not only in that parking lot area, but at the end of the parking lot where you have the farmer's market. So farmer's market does not require, you know, ten people out there moving plastic, you know, police barricades, but it's a switch that if you hit it, that it literally makes it carproof. It will stop a vehicle because, you know, I, I hate to be the, the, you know, thinking worst case scenario all the time. But we don't have anything if there were ever to be the, the rogue vehicle that decides to come in and, and drive over where we have plastic barricades. And so I've always been curious as to whether we could invest in some technology so that on Saturday mornings, when you don't want anybody to come in, that you have literally a, a vehicle barricade that is otherwise below the ground, the other, you know, to the point, you know, six days a week, you don't know it's there. And on the seventh day, when we need it to be there, it's, it's, it's a barricade. It's individual barriers that would preclude a car from coming in on pedestrian traffic.
It's a great idea, Jane.
Glad to take a look at that. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, my, my direction, you know, would be, I think we should move forward with Phase Two. And then Doug and, and team come back with a recommendation based off of all the feed, feedback as far as what a Phase Three would look like, whether it's raising it. Jane raises some good safety concern questions there, although I think if a car was really trying to get over that curb either way right now. But, and, and is it, you know, sixty or fifty percent of the size of that courtyard that exists today? And you give up less, a little less of the parking or whatever. But, you know, come, you know, explore all options on, on how to create that kind of courtyard area that, that enhances the gathering area, as David had mentioned.
Okay, thank you. Make sure that I've, I've got direction. Are, are you all okay proceeding with the pergola project and landscaping? Or do you want to wait on that as well? You know, we can proceed with designing a, a Phase Three. But, you know, we are coming into the, the budget year here. So kind of what, how would you like to proceed with this?
I'd like to move forward with Phase Two and, and a Phase Three design. And then Phase Three implementation when it makes sense.
And phase two, are we, we thinking that's the pergola and landscaping and Phase Three, the parking area?
Yes.
And, and Doug, to that end, will you also be able to let us know to, to what a lot of us have commented on about the openness on the back end of that pergola and the, the stadium stair effect too? We're, we're giving you a green light to move forward with Phase Two, but I sure would like an answer on those stairs. And I'm sure others would too.
Yeah, more of a project check-in when you guys get to that spot to say, hey, this is, this is what we can do and here are some options. And you know, I think if it's closed off, it's closed off. And I think you could still, it'd be smaller groups of people sitting on different benches talking. But I do like David and Autumn's point of kind of opening it up and sit down on the stairs and I'll be yelling at my kids to play nicely with one another, screaming at them the whole time. A little easier to see. Sitting on the stairs and I'll be yelling at my kids to play nicely with one another, screaming at them the whole time, a little easier to see. So it's good.
I wonder too, one last point, are those, um. Brick pillars or brick columns from a design perspective? I wonder if they need to be more, if they need to be smaller, more attenuated and, um. Yeah. For some reason, my eye feels like they should be smaller, but I don't know how other folks feel from a. From a design perspective.
I agree with you, Autumn. It could, it could feel more open if they're smaller, right?
They look like they're almost, based on the brick courses, they're almost 24 inches square. Am I wrong?
No, I would say they are less because it looks like it's too brick. But we're getting way into the details. Stop and Craig and you jump in.
Yeah, I think the perspective of them makes them look a little bit bigger because they're all sort of lined up. Um, I, I think we looked at a couple of options that had some thinner elements to it. And they just didn't feel like they were appropriate, um, to kind of support the arbor. Above. So they're about, I think 12 to 16. Um, so it's not particularly big. Um, on it, it, it just. Like I said, it feels kind of appropriate. It's going to feel a lot lighter than it does maybe from this perspective, because you're just going to see all the way through. There are going to be elements about the height that you'll pick up and, you know, at nighttime there'll be lighting. Um, but otherwise it's just sort of a, we, we tried to design something that had an element. Of you're looking down the parking lot from Main Street, they captured your eye and brought you back. But not something that dominated it or created a wall. Um, that it was very transparent and permeable. Um, you know, all the way through. So, you know, different types of weather, you can sit out there in the shade and. Just have a, you know, casual conversation and then it converts and during the farmer's market.
From that picture, are those, is that a bench back to back? So there's a bench facing inwards towards the parking lot and then a bench facing outward over the green?
We have not decided yet, but right now that image is really the, the benches would be perpendicular to the walkway, if that makes sense.
Right, on both sides though, I'm asking.
Both sides. That's right.
So there is still that sitting.
Right.
There's that sitting and overlooking the green with this design as well.
Yes.
The stairs are not available, not as much, but.
Right.
Autumn, do you?
Um, I wasn't following you, but now I am. Yeah.
Yes.
Good, that's good.
All right, Doug, thank you.
And one, one quick last thing, this brief is not the brief that's on the town website that links off of the agenda. So I'm sure there are the last minute updates and stuff like that, but I'm hoping, um, Betsy and, and team that this can be added, because. One, numbers are different. Bottom line is the same, but the numbers are different. And then this is a much more refined, um, rendering than. What's just on there, because there's just the, the. Little minimal drawings of phase one and the, the pergola on what's on the website right now.
Yes, that'll be updated.
Doug and Craig, thanks for all the hard work on this. It's, uh, I mean, these are, these are the types of investments that we make in the town and, and, you know, a hundred and $50,000 is a lot, not to minimize that, but for. A relatively small amount of money, there's a pretty big impact, you know? So I feel like the, you know, the, the investment versus the impact on the community, this is a high rate of return. So. Excited to move forward with it.
Hey, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Doug, as well.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Jamie, do we need to vote on this from a budget standpoint? How do we, because you got to get the funds.
Yeah, I'm thinking Doug's got the authority, proceed with this and we'll put a budget amendment together for your next meeting to move the money.
Do you want to just add that to consent unless we get any sort of feedback?
I think that'd be great.
Doug, can, can you additionally? And I guess you'll have to do a, a site evaluation on these stairs, because I know that the number will change. If you've got to put, uh. 12 to 16 foot wide. Two level stadium or three level stadium stairs on, onto this side of this thing that, that, the budget nu- number is going to change. Not exponentially, but it's going to change.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Doug. Craig's on other is. The screen, this, my screen order changed. Thanks, Craig. We appreciate it. Okay, we move on to item F. Um, we'll call on town manager Jamie Jeffs, Justice to review upcoming agenda items.
All right, thanks, Mayor. So May 25th, the highlights are the budget, uh, public hearing and discussion of, of the budget. We're also bringing you the guaranteed maximum price. On public facilities. So as we discussed, we need to take action and move forward on that. And then coupled with that is the GO bonds issuance, the resolution to move forward with that. And, uh, we're going to slow down on the nondiscrimination ordinance. So there's no consider approval. We'll take that off. And then bringing the Linden mill back to you on May 25th. And then on June 8th, I think that's the. Looking for the budget approval at that meeting and then likely the 160D approval that we had the public hearing for tonight. So those are some of the highlights of what we have coming up. Does anybody have any questions or thoughts?
No, I'm good right now. I think that, you know, particularly with, uh. A couple of those things. Particularly the nondiscrimination ordinance, I think that there's been some directive on that and I think that's good. So. Um. Anybody got any other questions about upcoming agenda items before we, uh, summarize? Mr. Justice, will you summarize?
All right, here's what I got. I got, uh, which Bear found the COVID data about the college numbers in the county population. Uh, percentages for vaccinations. I've got. Nondiscrimination ordinance slowing down. We're going to address the questions and the concerns, more engagement. I think Eugene got, kind of got that direction. Uh, let's see, under budget, I got Evelyn Streetlight, we'll check on that. And then, uh, Karen, Pete, now we've got a list of the other kind of information points there under budget that we'll. Uh, prepare and bring back to you. Linden Mills, we're going to check on the indemnification question there. Phase two downtown gathering budget amendment for the next meeting under consent. And that's what I got.
Jamie, for Evelyn Streetlight, I, I, it's that whole street. Right? I mean, once you get. I mean, even, even, you know, Roosevelt Wilson Park. I mean, there's, it, it just. Start at the circles of 30 and look right. Okay. You won't miss them.
I think it can even be in part of the, the conversation that some of the team has already had with regards. On talking sustainability. I mean, from light pollution to everything else, it, it kind of factors in to look at what. The technology is that, you know, we, we know that the technology exists. Where you can be far more directional, um, with lighting versus just. You know, flood lamp towards every direction.
Right. So at this time, for all of those that are listening, we are going to, uh. I'm going to have a motion delivered shortly to move to closed session. We will adjourn our meeting tonight from closed session. So once we move to closed session, we will not be back. Um, at this time, I need someone to make a motion to close session as it's written on the, uh, agenda.
Motion to move to closed session per NCGS 143 dash 318.11A3, Town of Cornelius at all versus MI Connection Communication System. DVA continuum at all.
All right, Commissioner Ford has made the motion. I'm going to do a roll call at this time. Um, Mayor Pro Tim Campbell.
Yes.
Commissioner Sitten.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Michael.
Yes.
Mr. Fuller.
Yes.
And Commissioner Ford.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, at this time, we are going to adjourn to closed session and we will close our meeting out tonight. From closed session. So for those of you that have been watching via our social media. Uh, Avens, thank you so much for your involvement and engagement. Take care and have a good evening.